Okay. Regular meeting of the Towns of Ocean, planning board of September 25th, 2017. Please come to order. Please close the roll.
Mr. Chair.
Here.
Mr. Anderson.
Here.
Mr. Bodie.
Here.
Mr. Vannadato.
Here.
Mr. Buppi.
Here.
Mr. Good.
Here.
Mr. Levy.
Here.
Mr. Siano.
Here.
Mr. Wayne King.
Here.
And Mr. Brilius.
Please stand from the stoop to the floor. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic which sustains, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all. The notice requirements of the open public meeting law for this meeting have been satisfied. The copy of the notice has been sent to the African Park Press in a toaster and filed the office of the township clerk on July 25th, 2017. Emergency notice, it's an emergency exit through the courtroom doors and two exits to the rear of the room. Please note the no smoking laws are in effect here tonight. Also notes board policy. Another case will be started after 10:30 p.m. and another testimony taken after 11:00 p.m. In addition, each applicant will be limited to one hour of testimony. Also, please note all meetings will be video and audio taped and shown on the Township of Ocean's community cable channel, Channel 22, on Verizon FiOS and Channel 77 on Cable Vision. All cell phones must be turned off. If you need to make a call, please do so outside the meeting room. Before we get going, we have to introduce our new planning administrator, Ron Kirk. Welcome aboard, Ron. And Mr. Brad is going to swear him in.
Yes, sir. Mr. Kirk, would you rise, raise your right hand? And would you read the...
I, Robert K. Curtis, am sworn in as Deputy Director of the Constitution of the United States of America, and shall bear the oath of faith, allegiance and service to the government, the family, the union, the state, under the authority of the people. And that all testimony that I shall provide during all hearings throughout my service shall be under oath, and therefore I will be under any obligation to speak at this time at all times. I, Curtis Curtis, swear that I will faithfully, faithfully and justly perform all the duties of the township of Ocean, by any warning and proceeding, to the best of my ability. So, I'll be done.
Congratulations. Bring us to the first business tonight, it's resolution memorializations. They're posted on the board unless someone asks to be read in full. We're going to look at them by title only. First one's Italian American Association of the Township of Ocean, Block 189, lots 6 and 9, 1110, Highway 35, Ocean. Alawford, is there a second?
No second.
Close the roll, please.
I hear you're not holding it long enough.
You're not even eligible.
Oh, well, you just excited me.
Here.
Okay, Mr. Chair.
Am I on call?
Yeah.
Yes, sir.
Yes, you are.
You stayed in your room.
Yes.
Dr. Vannadato.
Yes.
Mr. Buppi.
Yes.
Mr. Good.
Yes.
Mr. Levy.
Yes.
Mr. Siano.
Yes.
Next item is C2 acquisitions LLC, Block 141, lots 1 and 23, 2301, Route 66 in Ocean. Alawford, is there a second?
A second.
Mr. Detective DeGennaro, close the roll, please.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Dr. Vannadato.
Yes.
Mr. Buppi.
Yes.
Mr. Siano.
Yes.
Just another, bring us to our first case tonight, it's a continued case, J and M Abene LLC, Block 1.02, lots 52.01, 53.01, 54.01, 17 Cindy Lane, Ocean, in MR, MIR1 Zone. There's an application for preliminary and final site plan approval with variances in order to construct 72 residential units. Attorney for the applicant, Robert A. Casuva, there's square. Good evening.
Good evening. Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is Robert Casuva from the law firm of Visgar Hoff. I'm here tonight on behalf of the applicant. It's been a few months since we were here, and I think in that time we've made tremendous progress on resolving a number of the technical issues that were questions that were raised by the board's professionals at the first meeting, and I think that that's reflected in the review letters that were received. To proceed with the application...
Well, we have a little housekeeping to do first, so let's do our housekeeping first.
Okay.
Okay, Ron, would you mark the packet B2 with tonight's date, please? And we'll start off with Mr. Higgins' planers report.
Yeah, I'll summarize it.
I can read it.
They did submit revised plans in response to comments at Illinois and coordinated last year. Generally, they've done everything I asked for them except for one thing. We'll summarize the variance, the variance, the soil removal, the change of grade from more than two feet. They provided testimony with regard to hardships for that, with regard to the engineering issues. The planning has been, I have no concerns, but I'll refer to it for engineering. Location to the curb cuts, that hasn't changed, and again, it's the unusual configuration of the site where they have the curb cut made sense. The issue of the mulch, they have revised the plans to eliminate the variance to four inches of mulch. For the design, the landscape plan, still not designed by a certified landscape architect, they have a licensed landscape architect. But I reviewed the plan, they made the changes that were requested, and I have no problem with the landscape plan, so I think that that makes a lot of difference. Regarding the wavers, sodding, as the original plans indicated, but all lawn areas will be ceded. Now, the applicants revised the plans to show sodder, and the buildings ceded, the perimeter areas that are consistent with the comments in my last report. Underground sprinkler system, they added sprinklers, all the landscape areas with the exception of the detention basin, which is again what I recommended in my report for. Buffer plantings, they've eliminated the need for the waiver for buffer plantings. They've eliminated the need for the waiver for tree size, and street tree plantings, that waiver hasn't changed. There's just street tree plantings along St. Roger Lane, which is a paper street probably will never be built, so it's really hard to do that at this point. With regard to other comments, they're provided, donation of $25,900 to the Shays Street Fund, which is what their obligation is, so there's no waiver necessary there. And the only other comment is I had asked that they move the garage five feet to the south, and they moved it to the east instead of the south. So, I still think the problem with the new facility, and I think what might really be considered is moving the garage actually farther to the south, because that's a drive aisle right next to the garages, and people will be backing onto those garages, they'll be blind until they get most of the way out of the garage. They may want to consider moving those garages, mother fifteen feet, other than five feet, to eliminate that situation of somebody who gets blindsided in the drive aisle. That's it.
Thank you. And Billy, your hearing report?
Yes, it was Kim's report dated September 12th. I apologize, it's a little lanky, because I just felt the need to explain things, but most of them are positive. As you pointed out, Jim pointed out, the applicants and professionals have worked pretty well with us, as Mike often has. We've needed to talk, meet on the phone, whatever, and I think most of the major issues are resolved. I understand they want to discuss a few things, but let me summarize, I'll just go through some important things, rather than every technical issue. So, on page two, item 10, we like the plans to show what the proposed filing, striking pavement markings, and be approved, not at time of construction, but on a plan prior to construction. With regard to item 14, I'm sorry, with regard to item 11, that could be a variance. What they've shown for variance restores is eight and eight, which is what is allowable under the EDA, but also, I'm sorry, yeah, eight and eight. No, 13 and five. 13 and five, whatever it was. All ordinance has a specific requirement for advantage accessible, the eight foot of stall and eight feet of access aisle next to it, which is an allowable option under the barrier of pre-code. So, rather than granting a variance, don't ask for the variance, just strike this, it's fine, it'll meet the code. One of the items, and I won't belabor, there were some neighbors concerned about groundwater impacts and groundwater table, and we found some discrepancies, if you will, between the findings of the groundwater study for this site and the groundwater study for the immediately adjacent site. So, both applicants kind of combined forces at my request, and we did a series of test bits at the same time across both sites, went to the multiple day, observed everything, everything fine. That was a really, you know, very good cooperation between everybody involved in that.
Thank you, Bill, for putting that together.
It's wall mounted fixtures, item 23, on page three. Again, don't ask for the variance, you can just get a downlight in there, it'll work fine under the socket. Item 31, on page five, okay, we happen to resolve, at least to my satisfaction, both on this development and on the development next door, how is determined if there's going to be emergency access? Asking questions out to the township administrator regarding exactly that. In the interim, as a condition of approval, I would recommend that the board insert a condition saying that we'll get an easement for emergency access, should it be determined by the township to be necessary. The access would be for Cindy Lane Family Ventures, because they had originally come in with an emergency access from peer view, and for whatever reason, there were a whole number of neighbors that were upset about that concept. But they have common lot line along a primary access drive to this development, and so it might be, it might not even be necessary, because they changed their whole configuration down there. But if it's necessary, we'd have to get it. Item five, I'm sorry, page five, item 33, I requested some fencing along the common boundary, east of the line of this site and the west of the line of Cindy Lane Family Ventures, for a few reasons. The primary reason is that there's head-in parking on this site facing east, and 150 feet to the east is a residential building. Mirror goes back that way, so if you're sitting on your patio or your deck or whatever that building has, you're going to see all that, some fencing back there would help it a lot. I had asked for a six-foot solid face fence. I don't have my heels dug in on that, we can talk about different options on that. But that was, and you guys are thinking as affected is the detention basin right there, and some proposed decent screen, in terms of evergreens. And I'm anticipating there's going to be children in this development, and if they be playing and head down to that basin and not be seen by someone, it could be a problem. I'm not paranoid about that stuff, but I had some bad experience in the new project or something. So, I'd just like to be a little bit proactive on that. Item 35, on page five, close to what Jim just said. There's a number of right of ways out there. One of them is the Cindy Lane Extension, and one of them is St. Roger Web. They probably will never be built, so, for a number of reasons, but even if they are, it's a close call.
Hold on, make the question.
Right now, there are, in anticipation of the development that was approved years ago, the developer went in and started putting in curves and drainage and sanitary sewer, and actually pavement, and established a paved path, which looks like a roadway, for lack of anything better, that connects Cindy Lane, Westerly, to the beginning, into the site, and then to the north, to the area back there that, after the thing, Ocean Glade. In any event, there are curved 30 feet apart, pavement, and there are easements for drainage and sanitary sewer outside of those. So, what I asked is that rather than get involved with whether Cindy Lane's going to be built or not, would they give us an easement to access the Ocean Glade property centered on the 30-foot pavement, the 50-foot wide right of way, he's been centered on the existing pavement? And it could be structured to self-extinguish, should the Cindy Lane Extension, which is a little bit further east, ever be formalized and built, and there's no more need for this. No one's looking to add any difficulty that's not necessary, but I don't see that thing ever being built, and so right now, these pavements, I don't think have any adverse impact on it at all. So, those are my big items. Rest of it, as I said, everything was, I thought we revolved pretty much everything off, we didn't, we'll hear that.
Okay, and Billy, if you review the traffic safety report and farm marshals' report and refer to the...
The latest, I reviewed some in the past, don't remember seeing...
This one's dated August 30th, 2017.
I'll look at them very quickly if you want right now.
And farm marshals' report. But just, we'll just note right now that they're part of the packet, and just take note of it. If we have any issues complying, let us know.
Okay.
Why don't we let the applicant proceed? I'll take a look at these, and then if there's anything, I'm sure it'll be...
Okay, fine, okay. Mr. Casuva, that's an ad hoc rule, would you...
Thank you. Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. I was just going to say that I think that there are, I have four witnesses here, we have others, if there's other questions that come up, but four witnesses that I thought the board would hear from. I don't think that it's going to be a protracted presentation by any of these witnesses, but I did want to follow up with having our civil engineer, who testified at the last meeting, and can discuss some of the issues that the board engineer raised, and hopefully, I think we're on the same page for, hopefully, all of the issues, but maybe there's one or two issues that still need to be discussed with the board and the board's input. Also have our architect, there was a question that was raised by the board regarding changing some of the elevations to wrap some of the features around on the side, so we do have that exhibit to show to the board. I just wanted to be responsive to a question that the board raised. We also brought with us here this evening, because there was another question from the board regarding traffic, so we did bring a traffic engineer here today. And finally, we do have our planning consultant here today. We're hoping to go through these witnesses and put on a presentation that hopefully can bring this application to a conclusion, and without wasting too much more time, I'd like to call up our civil engineer to complete his testimony from the last meeting and respond to the issues that the board's engineer raised.
And that will be Mr. Hammerhand?
Yes.
Just to remind him, he's still under oath from our last hearing.
Yes.
And was previously qualified.
If you wouldn't mind discussing some of that. Okay.
Do you mind just stating your name and spelling it forward to court reporter?
Yes, it's Josh Hammerhand. Do you need to use the microphone?
For recording, to get it on TV.
H A N R A H A N. So, the, this is the updated rendering that shows the boulevard drive has been shifted 11 feet to the north, so that now aligns better with this drive here, and has created more space to eliminate the walls, so there's no need for the combined wall fence height variance here, and we were able to add more evergreen screening for the buffer requirements.
And can we just...
Is this exhibit, is this marked?
This is new, because this is a revised exhibit.
Can we mark this for the record?
Yeah.
That's block 86, this is the view.
Can we just mark it as exhibit A7?
We have so many people do that.
This isn't freehold.
Oh, am I stealing your job? I don't want to... He was all excited.
Essentially, we had to add a wall to the other side between the boulevard drive and the infiltration basin here, but we were able to lower our seasonal high determination by nine inches, so we were able to get a little bit more volume in the infiltration basin, so that the stormwater still worked from a stormwater reduction and a water quality standpoint. As the planner touched on, we did slide the garages down because there was an issue with backing out of the furthest eastern stall over here, but we can slide the garages further to the south. I'm not sure 15 feet would really be necessary, but we can work something out to definitely slide those garages further to the south. And I think we've addressed most of the issues, as Mr. Fitzgerald said. The groundwater mailing analysis came back with minimal impacts to the neighbor to the east, and we can, oh, and another thing I did check with the fencing, I went to the site before the meeting, and there is an existing six-foot-high vinyl privacy fence to this property corner here, and then this last, I'd have to look at what the dimension is, 25, 30 feet, is actually a chain link fence, so if you wanted, we could do that section if that was required, and then we could work something out to do more of a solid fence along this from peer view over to this property corner, if they would please the board.
My only concern was on that left-hand property corner where it buzzes up the residential. I thought, looking at the plan, that there might be a gap in that fence as it came down to the extension of peer view, the common property line, so I wanted them to turn the corner and go upward on the page, if you would, but if there's no need to...
Yeah, this is, this is all solid six-foot vinyl privacy fence that is...
What I was trying to do is they're proposing an emergency access from peer view, and I'm saying that they also are proposing a water, a water system to enter the site there, and New Jersey American requires that they have an above-ground backflow preventer and a heated cabinet, and they happen to come in beautiful stainless steel, as you can see by the front of the firehouse on Terror Air, that's actually not theirs, if it belongs to the school next to it, but it's right out on West Park Avenue on the right side, just past the firehouse. And that's a variance condition in that case. Theirs is not, theirs is in the site, but I didn't want it visible, they're not great looking. So, I thought that if they were going to have an emergency access there, and that taken our installation, that it would be hard to screen it, and you could be looking right in. So, I asked for the fence, and it could be gated with, and done with an opticon or a notch box, whatever fire prevention wants, or emergency access wants, we have all of this in the town, and they've approved the other places. And then, when I looked at, well, if you're going to put a fence there, you've got the detention basin, and the headlights heading to the east, it might not be a bad idea to supplement the landscape and free them off. Again, my, the major thought on that was that over time, big evergreens, as they mesh together, lose their lower branches, because they're not seeing the light that's blocked by the upper foliage, which is all the way around, so then, in the area that you want to block over time, it gets very sparse, so the fence would be there to supplement it down the road.
So, just so we're clear, you'd like a fence from this corner to that corner?
Right, and if you want to break it or do something, it doesn't have to be a continuous straight.
Yeah, we can stagger it, yeah, that's definitely something.
Right, and you can break it around, you have a refuge area, storage area, refuge respect, you can break it around that, you know, you try to make it a little bit interesting rather than a wall.
Okay.
Doesn't have to be six foot, four foot, but allowed, I think when I talked about that.
Yeah, four foot.
That would look really nice.
Thanks, Bill.
Would counsel put the record in the specific...
Yes.
And Mr. Fitzgerald also touched on the proposed easement for the access drive to the Ocean Glaze property, which we would be more than happy to accommodate, so we can provide that as well. And we'll work out something with the emergency access, you know, down the road, yeah, we'll definitely work with you.
I'm not sure that it's been determined that it's necessary.
Yeah.
But if you do need it, then it's, the farm marshal has several systems to take into account. Is there anything else that in mind that we need to discuss?
Originally, the thing that everybody was complaining about was how the residents, you know, when people were going to pull in with their car, they were going to see the lights in their homes. So, you feel like the provisions that are put here kind of address all that?
Oh, we're trying to, yeah, I mean, it's not possible to entirely eliminate impacts of cars traveling with their headlights on, but when you pull into a parking stall and you sit there for a second or so, headlights if they're shining at a residence can be intrusive. I mean, they're out on your deck on a nice nightlight, a nightlight tonight, so. So, I'm thinking between the landscaping to offer, which is really nice, and some fencing in there to block the headlights, that should do it. Keep in mind that all of the people down below, it's also going to be driving around with their headlights on, so, you know, everybody, there's a lot of give and take with these things, everything can't be perfect, everybody has to give a little bit and take a little bit. I know you're not familiar with that development, there's another residential development very similar to this one on the property directly below it on the map.
And we did put a fence on that one.
On that same line?
On the southern side.
On the southern side, right, but not on the western side, because I went and looked at the plan, I said, okay, well, somebody's got to take up the slack.
There was just some comments also about striping. We believe that we can address those concerns through re-striping?
Yeah, we've already addressed the plan to revise the plan to address the hairpin striping, so there's no need for that anymore, and we can definitely do, we had the 11-foot van accessible swap with the five-foot hatch aisle, but we can definitely do the eight inch, no problem.
Okay.
All right, Mr. Chairman, as we discussed at the very outset of, or the very end of my earlier testimony, I looked at the site review by the traffic safety, and basically, he's talking about a lot of the things that I talked about in terms of the easement, and saying that Cindy Lane may never come to fruition, so can we get the easement in that area and design that so it could be a stop intersection, should it ever need to be? I think Mr. Hammerhand said he had no problem with that. The rest of it just talks about traffic impacts. We had the traffic impact study, well, all I asked for was trip projections, and we got an entire traffic impact study, which is fine, and it included the trip projections that we asked for, and discussed a number of other items. I guess to address the concerns of the Traffic Safety Bureau, this is a permit of use, and traffic impacts are typically not a reason for denial, so we just know what the traffic impacts are, and there may be some improvements at West Park Avenue, it may not, now that it's a county law. Years ago, we had developments that talked about pooling that and assessing that prorata based on trip generation, which is why I wanted that in the record, but it doesn't go anywhere. With regard to Bureau of Fire Prevention, what the farm marshal was saying, which is absolutely true, and the only thing that I'm asking for is the hybrids, that's between the applicant, the fire marshal, and New Jersey American, and I don't have any strong issue on that. With regard to fire lanes, that coordination should be done now, when the lane's stretched and marking and signage, or whatever you guys agree on, should be shown on the final proof plan, number one, it's bonded, and number two, it's inspectable by the township engineer, so it should be on a document. Other than that, everything else is pretty, that's accurate to me, unless they have any complimentary, fire marshal.
Thank you, Bill. We stipulate to what he said about the putting it on the final plans, there's no objection to that.
Thank you.
The only issue that I think that hasn't been raised yet, there was an issue that you put in your report about grading, about trying to reduce that grade to below 5 percent, and perhaps we could just talk about that very briefly, I think that we can continue to, I don't want to testify, why don't you respond?
Yes, before, we had a grade of 10 percent in the boulevard drive here, coming up off the intersection with the access drive to Ocean Glades. Now, we've reduced that to 5 percent, it's actually slightly below 5 percent. The reason for, I need to get as much of the stormwater into this infiltration basin as possible, so lessening the slope could create some issues with the drainage, but we'll definitely work with Mr. Fitzgerald in trying to lessen that. I don't know if we can get it to 3 percent, but we can work it, yeah.
If we have a 15 million PR, maybe we can just hash it out.
Yeah, okay.
No, I'm not trying to make any arrangements.
Okay, so we agree to, you know, we'll continue to work with you on that issue and try to find a resolution, the board's so inclined.
Thank you.
I believe that's it for this witness, unless the board has any questions, or any of the board's professionals, if there's any additional issues that you think are appropriate for...
Are there from the board, have any questions for the witness? Are there from the public, have any questions for the witness? No questions.
Okay. If we could have our architect. And if you could, exhibit A, A8, and these are just reduced versions for the board, if you'd like to see.
And this is Mr. Brennan, concerned?
Yeah, this is Mr. Tom Brennan.
Just to remind you that you're still under oath from listening.
Thank you.
Yes, could you please update the board on the, responding to the questions that the board asked you at the last meeting?
Yes, at the last meeting, there was a question in regard to the ends of the building. And as I'm pointing to the lower rendered here, that is the end of the building. And the request was to provide more of the brick on the side of the building. So primarily, what we did is, as I'm pointing to the front, we took the brick that's along the front, wrapped it around the corner, and then we also wrapped it around the back and for the first, like 15 feet in the rear. So the brick actually wraps around the building, and that was a request. We also took this end of the building here, and we dolled it up with some shutters. So we put some shutters on there as well, so it'll make it more attractive. I believe that was the only real question that came up. There was also a comment about would we be able to provide the actual or simulated colors. These are probably not the exact colors, but they may be very close to what is being proposed.
And could we mark that?
Yeah, we need to mark that.
Exhibit A9.
With regards to the first document that I did, was that filed with the board's recording?
This?
Exhibit?
Exhibit? I don't believe so. I think this was just for demonstration purposes. There was a specific question about wrapping that behind.
You're representing that the depiction is testified, being what it's actually.
Yes, that is correct. We will, absolutely, we'll accept that as a condition, if the board's so inclined.
So basically, it was a request to bring in a board of some sort. This here is a sample of the brick. It's a red-brown brick. It may end up being a little bit more brownish instead of the red that's there. But there are two types of siding. There's a gray vinyl siding, which is this one here, which is the lower one that's used. And then there's a darker gray, which would be up in the shingles, and that's the vinyl impression. The, all the trim work would be a white, the roof would be a weather blend, and of course, the shutters would be a black. And then there is a vinyl, I mean, not vinyl, a metal roof that's a slate blue color, which is what I'm pointing to here. So that pretty much depicts what the color scheme will be and what will be represented as far as the exterior is going.
Looks very nice.
Is there any questions? Happy to answer any questions. I don't believe there were any comments from either the board's consultants regarding the architecture, but we did want to be responsive to the board's request.
Anybody have any questions?
Just one question. There's some black walls in the middle between the two parkways, right in the center.
These here?
Up here. Up here, right in the middle.
This one here in the middle, that's a sprinkler room. That's where the sprinkler room comes in, and that's where they provide the sprinkler room at that location.
Sprinkler.
For the building, yeah. It's for the entire building.
Fire prevention.
Fire prevention.
Your property for the building, you know, building connection, that they have to fire from.
Anybody else have any questions or comments from the board? Are there from the public have any questions for the witness? No questions.
Mr. Chairman, I forgot to mention one thing, Mark. There's new needs and variance for changing grade, as Jim pointed out, they provide from testimony. I had also recommended that it be conditioned, that it be granted subject to satisfactory stormwater management plan, which they have now provided. So I didn't say that, but I probably should.
Thanks, Bill.
Thank you. I'd like to call who I think will be our last witness, our planner, tester, excuse me, our planner, Ms. Christine Cofone, to touch on the variance and the other relief that we're asking the board for this evening. Sorry.
Say it again?
Go.
Who just?
Andrew Rayham.
She needs to be sworn in.
You swore testimony about to give us the truth, all the truth, nothing but the truth to help you, God.
Yes.
Give us your name briefly and credentials.
Christine Nazzaro, N-A-Z-Z-A-R-O, Cofone, C-O-F-O-N-E. I have been providing land use planning consulting services for 21 years. I've testified here before both boards in Ocean Township and about 380 others throughout the state of New Jersey. I'm privately licensed, and I have a master's degree in city and planning.
Can you name the 380 others?
Sure. I don't know that we'd be able to do that in our hour that we're allotted, but I probably could get through most of them.
Then we'll continue.
Thank you.
Is the board accept her as an expert?
Yes, we will.
Thank you.
Sure. So as identified by Mr. Higgins earlier in the evening and in his September 19th review letter, this application meets all of the use and bulk requirements for the MIR-1 zone. So what that means is we're not here asking for any variance relief or setbacks, building coverage. The use is specifically permitted in the zone, which Mr. Fitzgerald stole my thunder when he said, even though he had those comments from traffic, this is a permitted use in the zone. So the governing body already decided this is a proper use here. We have very minimal variance relief, and Mr. Higgins has already identified them as C2 variances, and I would agree with that characterization, where in the absence, the soil is a hardship variance, I agree with that there. But I think the location of the driveway variance, you could clearly look at that one as a C2, it's a better alternative, it's a better zoning alternative and a safer site design to have the driveway locations that we're proposing or the location of the curb cuts as we're being proposed. And as far as the soil removal and the variance for the change in grade, you heard Mr. Fitzgerald say that our application would be, we were conditioned on providing a stormwater management report, which our application has gotten, we've provided a stormwater management report for the application. So really, quite minimal variance beneath those two variances for the location of the curb cuts, which in Mr. Higgins recognizes it as a better location, and the variance for the excess grade changes or the soil removal through the excess grading. Those are really very de minimis variances. I think the board could look at them as either C1 hardship for the soil removal and C2 flexible seat, a better zoning alternative for the location of the curb cuts. Although I think you probably could look at the location of the curb cuts also as a C1, because Mr. Higgins recognizes that the irregular shape of the property contributes to that, so you could rely on that as a C1. So that leaves us with the negative criteria, and that there would have to be a substantial detriment from the grants of either one of those variances if the board weren't to move favorably. In this particular application, I see no detriment whatsoever. Certainly, the benefits of the overall application outweigh any detriment. This is an inclusionary project that will allow for the creation of some certain affordable housing units, and it meets the zoning for the township in all aspects as far as use and bulk. So I see no substantial detriment to these two minor variances if the board will move favorably on them. I have nothing further on direct.
Thank you. Any questions or concerns on the board? And if the public here to be heard? No questions?
No questions.
Can I just say one general question?
Sure.
I want to ask you a question. So I, when I was listening to the testimony, this is going to take a year to build? Is that basically the time frame it's going to take to build?
I'll turn and ask my client, who knows the answer to that?
Is there anything that we're concerned about, about the residents that live in the area, that we should be asking in terms of caution or anything, so it's less destructive? Or is there any, I mean, it sounds like a big project being built, and I'm just kind of, just wondering if there's any lessons learned from other places that we may have not thought about, so.
This one, if I remember it, is leaving a substantial amount of vegetation along the common boundary with other residents. And then whether or not they're supplementing. So in terms of the schedule, I would think that may be the only thing that we could ask for in any supplemental vegetation. Right, and they mentioned that where they have a common line, there's already a six-foot fence. And to a supplemental vegetation, you could maybe ask them to put it up front. The site's going to be, kind of, developed, it's fairly compact, and I'm guessing that in order to minimize the costs involved, they try to get it done as fast and efficiently as they can. That's just sort of a business thing. If you drag it out, it's money. So, but, I mean, in terms of scheduling, it might be friendly in one section. It looks to me like the evergreens and the trees...
Bill, we're not going to be on a, Bill, you're not on a microphone, and TV land people will never hear you.
There's approximately 50 feet wide between the proposed garages. You heard the testimony about the garages that could be rented, and the suddenly property line. And that has a substantial row of evergreens just inside the existing fence on this property. And then there's some in between those evergreen, that evergreen row and the two garages, there's a nice row, if you will, that's on the Soldier Street Road on for the city of planning. If they could be put in very early in the process, it would probably be helpful a lot to screen the vegetation, you know, to screen the construction activity.
And in your opinion, would that be something that's reasonable to ask for?
I think it's reasonable, actually.
Do you have any votes on that?
I do.
You have to, Mr. Ray, you have to come up, and you're previously sworn from the last meeting, just doing all interview, I believe you were sworn in last meeting?
I was.
Okay, have a seat and just identify yourself for the record, please.
John Bean, I'm a principal on J&amp;M Development. We'll plant them as early as we can, but I have the landscaper guarantee the trees, and there's certain seasonality to when you plant the trees. And I want to plant them when it's smart and, you know, I'm all for the screening and we'll have it ready for bringing in the tenants. But if you planted them in August, it might, they might not live. So we want to plant them when the landscape will guarantee that.
Yeah, well, I can ask it a different way. I'm just trying to figure out how to minimize any impact as to the residents.
I agree with that.
Do you have a better idea than?
We'll follow all the laws and the rules that the town has, and we're pretty far away from the other residents, and we'll build it as quick as we can. I don't think there'll be a big impact. You're not allowed to start before certain times, you can't work on certain times. We'll follow all the rules. The site will be, I live a couple miles away, the site will be very well managed, and we'll plant everything as quick as we can, but we have to follow the seasonal plantings.
So would it be unreasonable to ask that when your schedule of construction activity was on the plan, that the specific period that you're intending to put them on beyond the plan, so that there's, when someone calls down, and when are you going to put up those trees, it's on the plan? You know, I mean, you can work it out with your landscaper.
Sure.
In terms of when you think you're going to plant them, and then put it right on the plan, so then if the question comes up by someone behind her, it's answered.
Well, we'll be happy to. And you're bound for this. We do all the bonded items as quickly as we can to get off the financial charges.
Thank you.
That concludes our presentation. I guess, I don't know what your practice is, to open it up to the public first before I say closing remarks, or would you like me to? I don't, I don't think there's anybody here to speak on this.
I'm not sure.
I don't know either, but...
These are all your people?
Yeah, I think they're all ours. We just want it to be ready. We want it to be ready.
He's back at the office working over these... Why don't you sum up, and then we'll just officially open it up?
Thank you very much. We're here tonight to ask for preliminary and final site plan approval. As the planner testified, we do satisfy all the use and the bulk requirements of the ordinance. We believe that the very limited variance relief that we're asking for is amply justified based upon our own planner's testimony and plus the testimony of the board's consultants and the other professionals. I'm not going to speak very long, so I just ask that you vote in favor of this application. I believe that the law clearly requires the board at this point to vote in favor of this application. There's no open items or points of disagreement between us and the board staff on any technical issues, and we do satisfy, as I stated before, and as other witnesses have testified, we do satisfy the bulk and use requirements. So with that, I will close my comments.
Thank you. Anyone from the board have any comments or questions or concerns before we open it up to the public?
Just one. So the stormwater management, so you mentioned that you did the testing between the multiple properties. And if, stop me if I'm going too far in asking those questions. So I know we had previous, we had people that live or work or have properties on the far right side that were questioning the, I don't expect, I don't simulate. Okay. Yes, that were questioning stormwater management. So am I able to ask if they were made aware of the results, and are they happy with the results, or they're comfortable with the results?
It's my understanding that they understood the results and had no further issue with the results. I had a telephone conversation with a gentleman that owns a property on the north side of City Land, who's been represented at meetings in this neighborhood. And what I explained to him was, I understand his concern. I've been at this site a number of times between this applicant, or this applicant, and the Simulane family's venture site. What I explained to him is that these stormwater basins, everything works as focal. You know, they've done their testing, they've done extra testing, I've looked at their designs. They should actually reduce impacts on him. I explained to him that fundamentally, there will be probably less water at any given time in the pipe in the street to which his system is connected, but that it may last longer, it may run for, you know, 28 hours as opposed to 15 hours, but at a lesser rate than that, because the stormwater standards that the state and the county authorities are accountable, require that they reduce rates of runoff leaving the site, not make them what they used to be, pre-development, where they'd actually be 25% below pre-development or, I mean, less frequent, and 50% below pre-development conditions for the two-year frequency. So that's pretty much a guarantee if everything works as intended and is in accordance with the designs, and they've done everything they're supposed to do to substantiate the design, there should be less impacts after these developments are put in than exist now. And I believe it says that. But he also knows he can call me anytime he wants, the board, or any aspect of it. Anything that he has to turn to. Thank you.
Anybody else from the board have any? Anyone from the public here to be heard? Is it all your people?
I think so.
Okay. Does someone make a motion to close a public hearing?
I do.
I'll make a motion.
One second, one second.
I'll second.
Call the roll, please.
Mr. Ray, sir?
Yes.
Mr. Ray, stand up.
Yes.
Charlie?
Yes.
Dr. Nazzaro?
Yes.
Dr. Nazzaro?
Yes.
Mr. Ray?
Yes.
Mr. Ray?
Yes.
Mr. Ray?
Yes.
I'd like to offer a positive resolution, motion for positive resolution. Shannon, do you need anything to highlight?
No, I think we're good. I do the speculations on her, and I will flip the board in terms of the work, I'll clear a copy of it for the next hearing. And if, you know, we have a special for, I'll hand it to you.
Is there a second?
I second.
Dr. DeBert, I'll call the roll, please.
Mr. Ray?
Yes.
Mr. Ray, stand up.
Yes.
Charlie?
Yes.
Mr. Ray?
Yes.
Mr. Ray?
Yes.
Mr. Ray?
Yes.
Good luck, you know, not publishing from here.
Thank you very much. We appreciate your time.
Okay, one more thing, guys. We have a minor site plan subcommittee application. Core State's Construction Services, A&amp;T D Bank, Lot 34, Lot 24, 802 West Park Avenue, Ocean, in the C2 zone. It's an application for minor site plan subcommittee group. They're going to install 11 bollards along the perimeter of the bank. It's been unanimously recommended by the minor site plan subcommittee. I'd like to offer a positive resolution. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Mr. Andrew, sign up, please, call the roll.
Mr. Ray, sir?
Yes.
Mr. Ray, stand up.